Builds character.
Huh?
Builds character.
Sorry, guys.
No, I brought her instead. Well, it could be the bags you brought. She doesn't have just... Her is just wearing a mouse. She has proof on page.
How are you? Good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks. My name's Angie.
You are with?
I am in media. I'm independent local.
Ah, okay. Welcome. I'm not even from Lawrenceville. I'm a county manager for Lawrenceville. And a former officer in the Concerned Citizens Association of Boroughs. And I have been coming down to the Concerned Citizens Meetings to make sure that they... their rights are not being violated.
Good, welcome aboard. Appreciate you coming out, actually. I've been documenting. I don't live in the borough either.
Do you want to be in on camera afterwards, ask her some opinion questions? Basically, what's your thoughts on our... how the meeting goes afterwards? Well, I was already quoted once in newspapers and their meetings are shit shows.
Did they print that?
Yes, that's exactly what they printed. That first, uh, meeting behind, uh, rumors? That Donna Blondo was there? I was talking to her before the meeting and she said, "What do you think of that video?" And I wanted to me, I thought, "Wow, what a shit show." And I was at a meeting over in Lawrenceboro. All I know is I showed up to a fake meeting. And one of my guys that was there said, "Was that an accurate photo of yours?" I said, "What was that?" He's there. "I read in the paper that you said that Lawrenceville Council meeting was a shit show." Yep, totally accurate. Those were my exact words.
Okay, this is a good turn.
Four of the seven council members are there in there.
Four out of seven?
Four out of the seven council members are there in there.
Do you know who?
So Gordy, Cleo, and Michelle.
So everybody but Cindy, the opposition four. They must have snuck in while I was getting ready.
Yeah, some Gordy guy here, they rushed in.
Matt Mansell?
Do you know the password?
Right now!
Oh, we're still setting up here. We'll let you in.
Six forty-eight, DJ.
Jerry, excuse me. What's he doing?
Are we both... we playing the non-list or what?
I've spent a lot of money. Spent a lot of money.
Where are you going?
Me too, every day.
Jackson, see, I live in a country that I like to watch.
Where did you run, girl? What you style?
We've got water. Lots of water. That's where it is. There's no doubt about that. I just think it's...
I'm not that lady. I like you.
I got them scouted. It's a little town.
Sign in.
There you go. Yeah, there you go.
Good for you.
Coles, please sign in. Sign in right there, please.
Don't leave the table to set up first, the chairs. I'll try not to stand in front of the camera. Something tells me there aren't gonna be a whole lot of, uh, chairs, so I figure I'll grab some of those wall space. What?
Anybody? Chair? Anna, take a chair.
For America, and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice for all.
Paulo? Leo? Cindy? Gordy? Yes. Mansell?
Yes.
Michelle? Mayor?
Mayor.
Dana?
Here.
Jeremy? The officer? I got you on the... Oh, okay. I don't know. Any of you have seen the... Sign here by the owner and on the front door. And also be respectable to turn off your cellphones, please. And on the front door is a notice from the owner. He wants things done orderly. And, uh... We hope that we don't need to call it for you, so. Approval of the meeting, of the special minutes, of the special meeting held on June twenty-first. Do I take a walk with them over from that to that? Also, the prior regular meeting on June sixth. Give the bills with you, man.
Gordy, can I suggest? Can we have these, like, twenty-four hours in advance, at least?
I... I agree with you, okay? The problem is, is getting ready for the meeting, uh, when we did work since last Friday.
So Friday would have been... it would have worked out. If you have a meeting on Monday, Friday would be good to get this... be sure, at least, that it's out.
But that's not a problem. I'll... Dana and I will try to get to that and whoever else. Also, we're still putting bills in, like...
Well, no, I'm just even... even the agenda. I didn't get the agenda till I got to work today.
Okay, agenda was on the door Friday.
Yeah, I've been...
And on the borough office Friday.
Like you said, holiday weekend. It's easier if I have my phone with me and we can...
It's tough because we were... She doesn't work Fridays, and we were doing the agenda Friday morning and we posted it and then the office, nobody in the office until today.
Did you email everybody?
I... I went.
What's happening?
She will email it.
Yes. Thank you.
Take your time, look at the minutes, we'll move on to... You wanna look... anyone wanna look at the bills? You wanna pass them over, Dana?
Yes.
Oh, you already did?
Uh, they're right there. They're in your packet.
What's the total?
Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred?
Eighty-two, sixty-two, just done. You have that in your bag.
It's all right here.
Yep. Where's the bills? Throw in these. These are just... Are the bills... where are the bill bills? These are just checks.
The actual bill itself.
The actual bills.
The actual bills.
These are just checks. Oh, I...
She has a list... there's a list in your packet of what the bills are? Exactly, take them out.
Yeah, but this one bill is seventy-three hundred dollars and it doesn't say what its encompasses. I mean...
Oh, for your kind of county service?
Yeah, I understand the police.
Okay. Okay, what we're gonna do is we'll pass on the bills and when we get down here a little farther, we'll take a fifteen-minute recess and you can go get the bills. Okay? All right, let's try that. Where do you want it? We're back to the approval of the minutes. June twenty-first, special meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve discussion?
Motion made by Michelle.
Eric says dollar increase for part-time employee. I voted no. It has me voting, it doesn't say... Says roll call and it names four people and then may is yes. I voted no.
Okay. When we approve the minutes, we'll declare that.
It says four and one.
It says four and one at the bottom.
Yeah.
Four to one.
So there's one through...
It says Michelle Corr- right, no, on mine.
But that doesn't say anything.
Or it says Cindy Burrows, no, I should say.
It says Cindy Burrows, but it says four to one.
Yeah, but there's no no.
I see no on mine.
Well, you wanna look at this one?
Dollar increase for part-time employee, Gordy? Yeah. No, it's not that.
Oh, excuse me, I was looking under the... on the, uh... I guess you put that...
Yeah, I suppose one.
You put a no in front of Cindy.
So we wanna end the motion, accept them as an amendment, second it as an amendment.
Need a motion to accept the special meeting minutes of June twenty-first. An amended under the dollar increase for part-time employee, Ryan Brown, to have, as it reads, Gordy, yes, Bob, yes, Cleo Russ, yes, and Michelle, yes. And then there should be no in front of Cindy Burrows.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Bob. Seconded by Michelle. Roll call vote, Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy, yes. Mansell?
No.
Michelle Corr- right?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Move on to the June sixth regular minutes. The motion is set to June sixth.
Second that.
Under Public Works, the purchase is served by land material. I think that should be that the quote of forty-six dollars was already put... or already by the Parks and Recreation Committee and we're voting on approving the forty-six dollars. Not to get the quote for the material. So, yes, I'll understand.
Where are you looking?
Under Public Works, Streets and Dykes. On page two.
Oh, yes.
We'd already got a quote, you know? The rural council is approving the quote to purchase the material.
Is it forty-six dollars or forty-six hundred dollars?
Forty-six dollars per... Per cubic yard.
So one of the yards is a good take.
Roll call vote?
Oh, wait, there's payment of the bills. I've got one other question. It says, uh, bills general fund up to January sixth. Is that supposed to be January sixth or July sixth?
I would say...
Or June sixth?
What page is that on, Cindy?
Two, top of two. The first thing, payment of bills.
Need a motion to accept those changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the changes. Minutes for June...
Sixth regular meeting. Motion made by Cleo.
One second.
Seconded by Michelle, a roll call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
Gordy, yes. Mansell?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Visitors comment, please step up here to the podium and name and address. And, um... Items around the agenda. Oh, I got you on the front door. You wanna get over there?
So fire department report for the month of, uh, June. We have fifteen calls for the month of June. Coming up, we have the Towne &amp; Tannen Fireman Association Meeting on July twelfth. Coney Area Fireman Association's July nineteenth in Lynnley. Monday night training's been pretty much consistent of filling our air cylinders and, uh, been down to the new station looking to see where things are gonna go and start getting our mindset on some things. Uh, we wanted to thank Paula Jones and Joe Nichols for mowing the yard up to the substation up there. Uh, thank you to the township. They cleaned up the dry hydrant behind, uh, Williams High School by the bridge course the other day. So that was greatly appreciated. So that was greatly appreciated. Um, if you put the only, the whole side in there, we're pretty nice. Um, engine eight, so we had an air leak on it that's fixed, uh, we took the boat out over the weekend and it runs fine. We put a new boat on it last fall, we haven't ran it really yet this year, which is great. Um, tanker, we were looking for some new actuators on our hydraulic, uh, portable pond, set up for fires. Um, went up today and, uh, our. Service, so we're gonna have to order a barber or two to get that. Um, our pagers, Darrell Long Communications coming up there. Um, as far as our new fire station, um, those that obviously go around it a lot and see it. Um, this week here, they should have, you know, they got the sidewalk done on the east side towards Crider's old place, uh, completed. Uh, blacktop concrete should be going here within the next couple. Side, they'll be putting the caps around the top of the building, topsoil will be going in the inside. The floor's done, they're putting the electrical outlets all in, they're running, uh, finishing out the bathrooms, countertops, the decon room and things like that inside. Still don't have. There's still parts that are, uh, waiting to be delivered, so, and so we get a completion date, we can't set an open house or anything like that. Um, Joyce, we got, uh, a call from somebody to call the workman's comp carrier. Not sure who called, was that you Dan? Or was it?
I will talk about that soon to meet the.
Okay, go ahead, because I was raising a couple questions. So we did try to call him the numbers, don't we answer?
Okay, well, uh, now with the, with the insurance, over our insurance for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-four, whatever, and one thing that he said is to make sure that the fire department understands the new federal state laws concerning workman's comp on, on volunteers and, and the roster, even for, uh, or winter parade or whatever, that you have to have a roster. I want you to call, is, is, you give Joyce the phone number and the name today, uh, Jeff Kyle.
Oh, okay.
You get that straight with Jeff.
Yeah, she tried, Joyce tried calling today, no answer.
Yep, uh, and then the other thing is, is can, uh, it, it helped us out, I believe, uh, Joyce sent us a bill every month, or just a friendly phone call or whatever. You got that, did you get it? Okay, forget that one.
Okay, the only other thing then, um, when we mentioned something about workman's comp, the township hasn't got their, uh, bill from the borough. Usually they pay it at seventy-five percent, they haven't received any bills yet from the borough.
I don't think we.
No, I, I know you guys got a lot going on.
Yeah, but he didn't mention it back two weeks ago. Oh, we got a dollar amount, I mean, but.
Right, but you gotta pay, you gotta invoice the township and get reimbursed from the township, is what I'm saying.
You billed the township for the work.
Of the, um, workman's comp and the borough pays a quarter because of the way the calls are split up for the most part in their township and borough.
Population rules.
Yeah, 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 yes.
But, uh, just make sure you get that straight.
Yeah, I know, Jeff. Anything for the fire department? Buildings coming, folks, that's all I can say. Thank you. Buildings looking, what's that? Station. They, they were in it, you'll hear it blown.
Yeah.
That'd be the same siren that was before, so, but it'll be on the center of the roof.
Nice.
So, cause it's a larger and help. Yeah, it's not helpful, Paul.
Well, it wasn't cool, it was a trade.
Yeah, here it is.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Anything else for the fire department? See you guys.
Visitors concerning the agenda? Step right up here, please.
So I have put together a petition and I was fortunate enough to. For the borough of Lawrence that'll sign this. This petition has made its way to the attorney general, I have been fortunate enough to send it there. The copy of the commissioners, they, they have received, uh, then outlets office also has a copy. Um, we are formally demanding the resignations of council members. Gordon Shilson is president and Robert Penzone is vice president. Your collective inability to properly and successfully manage the borough's business has exposed our community to legal liabilities that have and will continue to result in state-issued civil penalties, reductions in public funding, and the degradation of taxpayer-funded services the borough is obligated to provide. This will directly result in the cost of living in Lawrence, it'll substantially. Robert Penzone are on the majority of our councils and our committees that are here in the borough. They're in. The eyes of Pennsylvania. Robert Penzone have proven they are incapable of fulfilling the duties of their elected. We are demanding that you resign from your positions because your lack of representation is better than the type of representation that you are providing.
That wasn't on the agenda, but we'll put it down.
I know you're thinking how.
Hasn't before it exists.
Oh, it absolutely doesn't, the correct people have it. We are asking for your, we're asking for you to step down, if not, we are going forward with your.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
I got something, I have script.
Okay?
Sit down here. I'm gonna stop right up here. The dykes.
What's your name?
Derek. Our heart, okay? I want to know when they're gonna do something with the dykes.
What part don't you like about the dykes?
Uh, tall grass and stuff, they don't take care of it, keep it nice and everything. They don't, they don't, they don't even mow it. And then when they do go down there, that you can chop at it, they leave half of it there. They don't, they don't take it down, all the way down, make it look nice, it looks like hell.
Okay, well, uh, I don't know exactly what all the standards are for the height of the grass or what it can be, the height.
I can give you the height, and then when they don't do it, nothing with it, it gets this big up, it gets this tall.
Okay, how high is it now?
Right now, down below nine and a half, it's about like that.
That's three and a half?
Except from where I caught.
That's three and a half feet?
Oh, about, about three and a half.
Okay, uh, I'll turn that over to, to Dyke and, uh, road committee or whatever you wanna call it, uh, levy and is it?
And what about the, the parks, when's the park ready?
Okay, okay, the park was closed last fall by the previous council, okay?
We're not called by previous council. When you said it was. Locked, it was. Have their little picnics and parties.
We have one for it.
Their park is not.
Although, the thing was handy.
Okay.
So, oh, they smoke a lot of pot down there, all their plants are big. There's a lot of drug stuff, sex going on there and everything else.
Needles.
I would even suck my kid down there. I could have a march, I could have a march here, one to three days, a third of Christmas, you think?
But where were you when we voted to buy them?
I told you about it.
Where were you?
I was not in the meeting.
Well, you were told on it.
I told you about it.
Why didn't you make a motion to buy it then?
You told me it was already passed. You told me it was already passed, or I said it.
And what, and what did you tell me?
You said it's already purchased and will be here.
Okay, that was June twenty-first, it was voted on, on the June meeting.
It's still not done, so we could have had one to three days. Why her, it was all paid for and they're just wait for them to deliver, how long could it take for them to deliver it?
Good question.
Here's, it's not paid for.
Okay, then let's go with another person.
It's already voted on.
See?
Okay.
Already voted on.
Okay.
As it's ordered and, uh, it will be delivered. Through Friday sometime.
I was happy to pick the phone up. What else you have?
I, I'd just like to see it get done and I'd like to see that bank vote.
Well, far as, far as buying the levies, okay, they're gonna be done within standard, okay? And the second thing is the park, the, the march, if we had.
When you were told last month, we could be here one, three days. Who?
And I have an email that also stated it was already ordered.
No.
Cancel the other and get it at haul.
I had a bid, I presented it, I was told.
I was surprised, I didn't know it was like that, but I was.
No.
Was it twenty-eight hundred?
I don't know, they're all saying very expensive.
Is that forty-six cubic yards?
Hundred square yards.
Hundred, yeah, hundred square yards. Hundred cubic yards. Cause you're nine times bigger. All right, I'm gonna sit down, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, okay, next? No further comment, move on to, uh, departments, fire department, we got that, mayor's report?
Yeah, Scott's on the agenda already, I was gonna bring up Kurt Ashley, uh, we're looking for. Out the trees next to their house, uh, it's basically just dangerous, they're the old pine trees. Uh, one has fell already once for them, they're asking, do we pay for it all? Maybe you wanna take a look at it, and also they're looking for privacy funds, uh, from the ball field.
It's not that responsible.
I don't know if it's really the big, uh, you know, they set it all out, but. So.
It's off, it's the rentals. But no, he's talking about on our side, where the fence used to be for twenty years.
I understand, what we have to do is get the park and recreation committee to review that, see who's bribing. Those cut those trees, they need, they need liability insurance or whatever, or the cutter needs liability insurance.
I sure, I was a show.
The voter, the voters of the borough shouldn't have to pay for their privacy fence.
Exactly.
Well, it's the borough's, not something that.
They need to put it on their property, they want the fence.
It's been there since I was a kid, that's been torn down a while now, but it was there, it was there how long?
Let's focus on the playground for the kids first before we do the privacy.
Three years.
They didn't even there.
Okay.
They all built out.
Jim, for the.
Yeah, I want a fence.
Yeah, you, you have, exactly.
Turn it on, the borough put it up for me.
The hot hole, um, cherry trees and Calley Street, it is, but can we add Mill Street to that too?
That would've been marked out for two months.
Well, I'm just saying.
Okay, the first quote we got is too much money, we're looking for lower quotes, okay? Police report?
Gordy, I sent that to everybody back on June sixteenth.
That was after the meeting we voted on it.
Yes, and that's what you keep telling me, and that's what I'm saying, we could get it cheaper.
Yeah, but the problem, the problem is.
But it's been since June sixteenth, and when, now we're looking at what, what day, it's almost thirty days later. This could've been ordered and been here by now.
Uh, not. Oh, okay, that's fine Cindy, except for in the June meeting is when we purchase it at forty-six dollars.
But you didn't. And it was going to be delivered within a week.
Is it here? Is it here?
Is it paid for?
We voted and buy it.
Yeah, but why would you spend forty-six hundred when it, you could save eighteen hundred dollars and have it here the next day?
First of all, you, show me the quote. She's, she's saying it right there.
I got it right here, I emailed it, River Valley.
Same place the owner of the before.
Twenty-eight ninety-five, and it could be here with. And it's good until July.
But it was after the meeting.
Stay on the agenda first of all, okay, and the second thing is, the second thing is, you, this is the.
The march is on the agenda, okay?
Only a recap, all right, but what you told us, ten days after we bought the horse.
But you buy them.
You haven't bought them yet.
You haven't bought it.
No, we voted, actually. We already ordered it. Holy shit, settle down. I just like, I spoke to him, but I don't, he said he's supposed to be this week.
That was done a month ago.
So he, he.
I talked to him Tuesday and he said, this week, I don't know what happened a month ago, but I know that I spoke to him and he picked the phone up and then he come back and called, he said it'd be here by Thursday, I don't know if it's gonna be here.
We were all told at the last council meeting that it was going to be delivered within a week, that's what it was told to all of us that were here.
I think the question is, if it hasn't been delivered, then why can't you cancel it and order something that's half the price? I think that's.
It's not half the price, is that? Yes, it is for a hundred cubic yards.
Yes.
Okay, she said it, they don't matter.
Everybody got it back when.
I'm not gonna vote no after we've already contacted and purchased it from another.
Have you paid for it? It's not, yeah, that's your opinion, but.
Have you paid, Gordy, have you paid for it?
Now, dollar last night, okay, so.
But why can't, why can't you cancel it and just order it from hauls or wherever, it's a lot cheaper.
All right, okay.
Cindy, do a mo- Cindy, do a motion.
But if it comes tomorrow.
Yeah, don't even try it. You just said, now don't even try it.
No, he passed. Now, he said anytime from Wednesday to Friday.
Well, that's all pretty hard.
I have to say.
That's all pretty hard.
I have to say that it comes tomorrow.
Is it, we know it's the right, it means the right launch.
They just said it's not gonna pass, so why would it?
Because why would we pass it and have it come and have two of them?
Well, then call it up, see if they ordered it yet, pretty simple.
It has been ordered, it's.
Has it been ordered yet? Call and ask and see if it was got.
Okay. Call now.
Is it paid for?
Call now.
Is it paid for?
Call now.
You're saving eighteen hundred bucks, I mean.
I understand.
I, all I see is what it says on our quote, I don't see. She said it, she said it to Gordy. I don't see a quote. She said, everybody said there. Okay, that doesn't, and that's, how many yards?
Hundred.
It says a hundred yards there.
Yes. Hundred.
Hundred cubic feet or hundred cubic yards?
Hundred cubic yards, C Y.
And then what's the price?
Twenty-eight ninety-five.
Delivered?
Yes.
It says delivered here.
Yes.
Read it to me, where it says delivered.
Delivery of IPMA certified wood carpet that meets the criteria outlined in A S T M, then it goes through all this standard. Deli- delivered, will meet or exceed standards. Uh, fiber pricing is based on the current Co-Stars joint purchase bid award to River Valley for the supply of playground servicing material. This proposal is valid until July sixteenth, twenty, grand total twenty-eight ninety-five.
The same company we use last, the same company.
It began, it doesn't say including shipping, it says.
That's what delivery means.
Provide the supply and delivery of IPMA certified wood carpet that meets the criteria outlined in A S T M. River Valley Landscape.
We have a deadline.
The certification.
You haven't been to these before.
If it goes to that round, I'll be calling someone.
I'm not saying that this is not true, I, I'm just saying, the stuff you order, I can. We're better than right, our finder's fee.
Because somebody's.
Is there a finder's fee for? Vote on something, you pass it on June's meeting in ten days.
If you would've said, we wanted to do this last year, do you remember this, October, where it was? And we held it off because you didn't wanna do it that late in the season. Well, you couldn't do it last year, you didn't have the right. But we still could order it, but we did, we waited, so while you're on. But why wouldn't you use the same people that we used before? What makes you think we didn't?
Wait, what?
Nancy, there's no sense in arguing with you.
I don't know. He pulled you, he listened to you.
It's not cheap, though. What did we pay for it last? That's why I called, a lot cheaper. But you gotta do this at, at the time that you're voting on, you can't wait a month. Well, if you let us know in advance when you're gonna vote on it, bring it up, we try to do it on our cover, and it's all.
It's not the agenda and you weren't here, honey.
But she said, she said about three weeks ago.
But it was actually during these eight meetings.
And you're still not here?
It wasn't ordered.
I understand.
I...
It was ordered then.
Ordered it at that point. That's why I brought it up. It had not been ordered at that point.
They're ordering it next day.
So... We gotta make a motion to cancel the first order for the mulch and get it...
Cheaper.
For twenty-eight hundred dollars for a hundred square, a hundred cubic yards delivered.
Certified.
Certified, for, for the playground.
Motion. Need a second?
I'm trying here, hold on, wait, you need a second.
Somebody second that. Second the motion, Cindy.
He wants another one loaded tomorrow.
Why isn't she doing anything?
She needs a second.
Somebody need to second that motion for the mulch that you're looking for at River Valley. Thank you.
Get it cheaper.
Hang on, just a second. Is this something concerning the vote?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Leo's gonna amend that to say, have the secretary check and see if that's coming.
Yes.
Cause then he's gonna turn around and he's gonna come after you for that money.
Got that.
Okay?
I gotta go to the...
Tell him that there was a call that they approved, that, hey, if that thing isn't there Wednesday, okay? That they cancel it and see what he says.
This, this, this amendment...
Four days, but somehow he, they cancel it. But then it even moved out. You don't like two bills either.
I, I didn't make the motion to you.
I amend the motion. Get Bart, the mulch, for the playground certified mulch to be delivered by the twentieth.
No, their, their offer is only good until the sixteenth.
Their offer.
Or we can't.
Thank you, Craig.
Yeah. The new offer's only good till the...
We're going for the new offer.
But it's only good till the sixteenth.
By the sixteen.
But they're extending it.
And he said July.
July sixteen.
July sixteen.
Which is...
And today's July.
You've got a weekend. Now, I'm gonna do a double talker.
You got ten days.
Cindy, does it mention? Can you call and see if they'll extend that offer?
We got a motion on the table to, to cancel the order if it's not here by the twentieth. Need a second?
No, wait, what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't cancel by... Cancel it now.
Cancel it now.
You cancel it now, yeah. The first order. We've been waiting a month for it to come yet, so...
A month, another month?
No, he said they waited.
Wow, I thought they said...
No, he said that they've been waiting a month already on this mulch.
Hang on, let's let the motion die. Okay, there's confusion. And someone make a clear motion. Okay?
I make a motion to cancel what is on the...
And to replace it with a new mulch at the lower price if it can be here by the twentieth. Is that clear?
No. What happens if the first order comes tomorrow?
With, with an amendment, then if the first mulch is going to be here tomorrow, we don't do it.
Or to, or, or Thursday, or Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday, or...
Jesus. He's a sneaky little...
Okay, 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 okay. Calm down. We're trying to work with you, okay?
Michelle, don't you hold through your whole thing. Nobody's, no, nobody say anything. Let her call.
I would like to make a motion to cancel the current mulch order. If it is not delivered by Saturday, because that is the window they gave us, we will get it from the other company at a lower cost. Is that clear?
The challenge is, we don't know if we could cancel it between now and then.
I agree.
We didn't pay for it.
She's gonna call me back in a half hour.
Okay.
It's not paid.
Can we table it?
It's not paid.
Is that against anybody?
If you table it, can't break that up. Well, yeah, you got...
Has anything been signed with Mike Morris for this and has he received any payment or down payment?
We don't know verbal.
Verbal is nothing.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Verbal.
Hey, settle down. Go ahead.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Jerry, go ahead.
You're ready to just be a motion? To buy the old mulch if it's here on time, okay? Or buy the new mulch if you want my son. But, has there been any thought to telling the people with the old mulch how much the new mulch is?
Correct.
Between the two companies?
Understand.
And they should know about that. Well, what person? Because if they know, if you can buy it for half that much, their mom was bound to give you a heartbreak.
Right.
And down here, down there.
Understand.
But nobody thinks about that.
Right.
Nobody's saying that. Now, somebody argue.
Thank you.
Apparently, Mr. Morris is waiting for a delivery, he, she believes, for the mulch, then he'd have to go in there and pick it up. So what we would be doing is getting rid of the middleman, and that's why it's cheaper. But we can't...
Who, who's she?
The wife.
So, we got a motion on the table. Uh, can you read that back?
Yeah, cancel our current mulch, um... If it's not here by Saturday. It's not here by Saturday.
Gordy's for you.
Get it from who? Everybody, this, they're equal.
How hard is that to say?
And then you tell me...
Yes, pretty tough.
That, if it's not delivered, he's out.
But keep in mind, if he don't do it by Saturday, I think you said?
Saturday.
I can't call on Sunday, I already said you're Sunday. So it's one to three days, depending on how much...
Correct.
You have.
Right.
So, if he says he's a day late...
That's okay.
Three months.
Yeah.
We still say if he's...
Can we take this to a vote? Did anybody second? Did anybody second?
No.
No.
Mansell seconded it.
He, he seconded it. Nobody's seconding it in my motion. I'll second it.
I. The only issues you're gonna have is, what happens if Mike Morris has paid the company for the mulch? Okay?
We're gonna be here for a while.
If they don't have it by Saturday, that they promised us though, right?
We've been waiting a month.
He also has other contracts with the borough.
I understand.
What does that mean?
But you can, you can...
He's not the only contractor in the borough.
Has to stick with the verbal. Does that company just want to have to stick with the verbal?
Alright, go call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy? No. Mansell?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
Hank?
Yes.
Vote passes, uh, five to two. To, uh, to buy the mulch from somebody else that we don't know.
We do know.
We, we...
So, why are we not...
Please report. Okay, there, you got it, okay?
That makes a lot of sense. There's points.
For the month of June, there was fifty-seven incidents. We had one thousand two hundred ninety-five miles on the car. So there's two traffic arrests. Two non-traffic arrests, two adult arrests, one juvenile summary arrest, one motor assist, one police assist, two medical assist, one fire department assist, and two other agency assists, and two residential, or, actually, two residential checks. It would count.
Thank you.
Any questions for the police officers? No questions? Ambulance Association? Can you hear with the ambulance report? Committee reports, library. Anyone here in front of the library committee?
Yeah, I'm here.
Speak up.
Um, we've been trying to spruce the place up a little bit, um, and what we've discovered is that there's some, um, probably bigger issues that, um, may be in the near future. We need to have some look at and, and maybe, um, um, ask for some money from, um, the trust fund. So my understanding is that this money that's been sitting there for a while that hasn't been used.
It's used every day for utilities and...
Okay, I thought the borough paid for that, but it's...
It, it's...
Well, my understanding is there's fifteen thousand dollars in their checking account, about seventy-nine...
There's, there's fifty-seven, seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-nine thousand dollars to trust fund, okay? So my point is, the building needs to be maintained.
It's my tax.
Okay? Um, I think that there's, um, the, the basement needs to be jacked up a little bit. There's no electricity upstairs. Um, a couple of the floors need to be replaced, just things like that. Not, I mean, it's what has been done in the past thirty, forty years to that house. I don't think very much. That's all I'm asking for. Also, um, I mean, we're doing what we can. We're tainting and, you know, cleaning and doing things like that. The other thing is, I'd actually like to get a hundred or two hundred dollars to have a small event in August for the kids. It'll probably have something like a story hour, but with some other things going on.
Yep.
So...
The past fifteen years, probably maybe longer, the Craigers Foundation has always had a grant every year for Lawrenceville Bossrick Perry Library.
Right.
Library. But the last couple of years, the library has not, uh, applied for the grant.
Well, the reason is because, um, last year we did get it, okay? This year there was nobody, there was not a secretary to complete it because we need like, uh, tax information, stuff like that. We don't have. So we did get it last year. We did not apply for it this year for that reason.
The applications, I think, were out in August, or excuse me, October. I notified the secretary for, to do that and she didn't pass it on to the library committee.
Sure paying, Gordy. I'm just telling you, there was nobody in the office when we had the application to complete the information. So that's why we didn't apply for it. Plus, we don't really need it.
We have them.
We have money. It's like, we can get it every year, but we don't really need it.
Okay, um, I suggest that, uh, we put together a committee, build a committee and look it over and see what, uh, needs to be replaced. Like wiring, plumbing, floors or whatever, and, uh...
When's the kids' event?
We don't have a date yet, but, um, some, somebody's interested in like, you know, sort of planning it, so it's a dance award. So I said, we'll go ahead and do it.
So I think, if you're gonna have it, soon.
In August, probably.
So we can make a motion to the hundred or two hundred dollars she needs for the event.
Yes, please.
And make a motion that we front the two hundred dollars for her children's event for the library.
Thank you.
It's fine. And then when, uh, we get this, uh, together for whatever's gonna need repaired wise, and we find out how much it is, I suggest we start looking for grants and, and support part of that.
We have money.
There's money in the library, kind of, Gordy, for this.
When that trust fund is gone, it's gone. In other words, also, the trust fund is controlled by the Bossrick Perry family.
Exactly.
Okay?
And that money is to be used to maintain the library. I was there when Mrs. Perry's niece did this.
They...
And I've been in the meetings with Brian Teblin at CNN that controls the trust fund.
But what I'm saying is...
So that money can be used, it's not up to your judgment. It's the library committee and the contractor that they choose whether they wanna use that money to fix the library.
But what you don't understand is, that trust fund is controlled by that family.
I know that, Gordy. I was in the meeting with her niece, Mrs. Perry's niece and Brian Teblin from Citizens in Gordy.
When the money's gone...
I, really? Say it three more times.
When that money's gone, it's gone.
I know. When the money's gone, it's gone. I know how trust funds work.
You do?
There's, there's a motion on...
Don't talk to me like I'm an idiot. Hey. That money can be used to fix the building. It's not up to your judgment. It's up to the boss.
To the trust fund.
I motion that I use the money to fix it up.
I motion for two hundred dollars.
I'll say.
I'll vote for it anyway.
Go call vote. Two hundred dollars for...
I know. Yeah, I opened that door, forgot.
Gordy, yes. Mansell?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Seven hundred to support the library, uh...
Story hour.
Building enforcement zoning officer, zoning officer motion made by Matt Penzo to advertise for a zoning officer, second by Cleo Russell. Motion passed. We get no zoning applicants. Public Works Streets and Dikes.
We had a guy here.
Yeah, one of them, he volunteered.
Mike Tammerman.
Mike Tammerman volunteered.
He didn't fill out, he didn't, he didn't come in and fill out an application.
Put it in the paper.
He put it in the paper and advertised it.
He volunteered before you...
Al was the zoning officer. He didn't willingly... Al didn't have my husband, I'll be volunteered to do it.
Well, he had, he had a month to, to apply for the position.
Oh, thank you, hon.
Public Works Streets and Dikes, Parks and Recreation, Ball Field Lights Repair, Tru-Training Motion Pass. Will you have more than a vote? Okay. And will you, uh, move, uh, let me, uh, that? You're talking about your, yeah, your...
I think you have the mulch.
I have it, yes.
I know. I'm gonna find the mulch. Well, we know, we just know the ball field, the, the lights. Now there's two out there, and, uh, we may have some old mulch. We're hoping just to switch it. That the same place for the trees over there?
Yeah, it was in the general area, yeah. We'll help everybody out if we can, those two balls.
That was, that was in the minutes, uh, last month. Personnel appointment.
Northing, part of your premise.
Northing, so they would help you out, yes.
It'll go along.
The tree as well is, uh...
Just changed them the bulbs. Cause they couldn't handle them.
What is in here now? They're halogen. We didn't buy new ones in your place where the dirt broke. Personnel and appointment. Vicki Willis of Penn York Accounting Services to treasurer and is bonded as needed. Right now, she's doing mostly accounting work and, uh, she has said that she will take on the role as the treasurer. Need a motion to appoint Vicki Willis of Penn York Accounting Services to the position of treasurer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Vicki Willis of Penn York Accounting Services to treasurer.
Is there a fee to go for that?
No, fee was, it was, uh...
Is she bonded?
Interact her...
Bonded as needed.
Who is she bonded to?
Who's she bonded to?
Fee was with, uh, she, she, the fee was in her proposal when we hired her as a councilwoman.
You were doing what?
No. You, you got it in your packet last month.
I think it was ninety-five hours an hour.
Number one?
Mm-hmm.
No, no. Second motion by, uh...
As like your district on?
Motion made, uh... By Michelle, roll call vote.
That question on motion?
She give us a rundown on how much it costs for her... Uh, and I assume that it's gonna be somewhere between twenty-five and what was her highest price? So it's a hundred or four per hour? Got a motion on the table, uh, roll call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
Gordy, yes. Mansel?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Vote passes by the two, that now she is the treasurer.
And what's the rate?
Ninety-five bucks an hour?
It's anywhere from twenty-five to I think on her pay scale, it's two hundred and twenty-five an hour.
So is it ninety-five or is it one twenty-five?
I don't know. It's wherever it's on the scale.
Can you...
What's on the scale?
Can you tell us? Can you tell us what happened to the other accountant that we had?
What happened to the account?
Yeah, why isn't, why are they no longer the accountant?
We haven't removed them yet. We are, we didn't appoint her as accountant. We appointed her as treasurer.
So we're gonna pay a treasurer a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour?
Well, whatever it takes.
An hour? Are you kidding?
Personnel and appointment. This is starting July first, twenty twenty-two.
That's our two.
Uh, removing that from, uh, Michael McCade and change it to...
No, it's broken.
Motion by, or someone started over. Services, new motion at the starting, uh...
I'll make a motion for Penn York to, 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 starting July...
Motion made by Michelle, I'll give you a second.
What is the church over?
Have we, have we looked around for anybody that will compete with her or price-wise? Are we gonna... Did you put it out for bid? You don't have to put it out.
I know we don't, but we do everything else. I mean, it could be somebody cheaper than that.
Wouldn't that be good for the voters in town if it was?
I didn't, I didn't know we were changing them.
We just hired McCade two months ago, McCade.
And I didn't know we were gonna change it again.
McCade, we're running this, we have a special meeting. Need a second on the change of payroll from a third party. By Cleo, roll call vote.
You'll never find out.
Cleo?
You will never find out.
Cindy?
No.
Gordy, yes. Mansel?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Hank?
Yeah.
Motion passes by the two. Remove CPA, Michael McCade from payroll services. Need a motion for that?
I make a motion to remove CPA Michael McCade from current payroll services.
Motion made by Michelle, the second. Second by Cleo. Roll call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
She don't want you to vote.
Nope.
Gordy, yes. Mansel?
No, Mansel.
She, she, we're already paying this lady. We're gonna pay this lady. So, oh, I mean, it's a no brainer. I don't know what she's doing either. So is it, where do you... No, no. Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Motion passed. You looking for somebody cheaper in the business?
Yes.
Absolutely. Old Mo, old, uh, business, born of Levy, did not receive a bid for Levy maintenance. Potholes. Well, I love some of your... This'll be the third time we advertise this.
Did the paper make a mistake with the last guy or what? The dates?
I was there, I was there both days. That's why I was there.
Well, no, your post-bid, pre-bid meeting today kinda got confusing.
Yeah, but I was there both days.
Yeah, but I didn't know people didn't show up right back because of the confusion.
Uh, that could be. I'm not positive, but I will say this. I got one phone call and, and I told him he was gonna meet there and review the job.
Nobody showed, nobody pulled.
We had shown the last fall. You guys wanted to hit it out.
They didn't submit.
They never looked at the job board.
He did it before for us.
Never looked at the job board.
He didn't finish the job and he submitted it.
Potholes on...
Sorry, Tony.
Sorry, Tony.
Go ahead.
Potholes on Candy Street, Cherry Street, um, estimate on quotes in Mill Street Project. I got a quote on the Mill Street Project, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, at that rate, it has to be, uh, bid out. Yeah. That, that Mill Street is grinding out the vast, uh, replacing it with three inches of pavement.
They can't touch their road.
And I said to him, give us another estimate on draining out two inches instead of three. He's working on that.
And what about the job on Cherry Street?
It's a, what's the guy's name? The guy did, uh, the prior to... Yeah.
That's housing, right?
Store, not Cherry Street. I live on Cherry Street.
Anyway, he did an excellent job, but the crisis, price of lockdown was a lot.
Center Street housing.
Hiring a certified water sewer operator, uh, he's interviewed a couple of people. We've contacted other people. I contacted people, saw a guy today and, um, the water sewer committee has gotta get together and, uh, pick out a day or a time that we can meet with this guy.
Is he aware of the DEP violations?
And then we'll get to plus. Yeah, I got his, his, his capable here.
Does he does, Frank, Sam?
Yes. City Borough's debit card statements, transactions, state like quick...
Gordy, is he aware of the DEP violations? Don't, hey, hey, whoa, 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 whoa.
Asking a question.
Look, we're doing this, this is on the agenda.
Okay, and this is a question on the agenda.
It's not on agenda now. It's under Old Business, okay?
Which is part of the agenda.
Just settle down, okay?
I'm asking the question. You're talking over everybody. We voted you in. You need to answer our questions.
When we will get to that, get on the agenda, okay? Just listen to you. City Borough's debit card statements.
You wonder why people ask the resign.
How did this, how did this go on Old Business when it wasn't New Business, when it wasn't anybody's business?
Thank you, Kenny.
Debit card statement transactions was mentioned at a, an executive meeting.
No, it was mentioned, it was mentioned at the last, uh...
No, it was mentioned at an executive meeting. Why is this under Old Business?
Because you wanted to know.
I did not.
Now, let's settle.
I will go and I will... So I can get and look at it.
Well, that was, I mean, we could listen to...
You brought it out publicly.
We're putting executive session on public meeting minutes.
No. No.
That's exactly what you just did.
That's her, what she said.
My opinion and it happened, so my...
That was on the agenda.
I'm seeing the agenda.
New Business, water sewer application for Caitlin and Ashley Wetzel for property fifty-seven Locating Street, check number twenty-three-seven, amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. Need a motion to, uh, return that for, uh, lack of EDU for that property.
And why do we have a lack of EDU?
Why do we?
Why do we have a lack of EDU?
Well, we can...
Because we have...
I make a motion. I make a motion to return his hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, come on. Answer some questions.
They have a motion.
Okay, second.
Oh, second.
Second by Cleo, roll call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
I don't know why we've held on to it for four months to begin with. This has been at every meeting.
We got it last week.
It's been sitting in there for four months.
That was the first one.
They returned the first one. This is the second one.
Why, why are they denying it?
We don't have EDU.
For, yeah, as long as we're returning it based on no EDU.
We don't have any certified operators.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, Gordy, yes. Mansel?
You witness, you order?
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Call him every time you get in.
Motion seven zero to return the check. Okay, uh, office phone number five-seven-oh-eight-two-seven-thirty-two-fifty-nine from Frontier is running approximately sixty dollars a month. Do we wanna discontinue that? I believe that's, did we, was that the... That goes to the water sewer. We're not using any, uh, water sewer phone lines. We, nobody to call.
You wanna delete the phone line or...
So we have to do right now.
Over to the water sewer, what?
We're using cell phones.
You have a D and A computer over there also.
Are there, are there phone numbers available if we need them?
Nobody will answer.
They will if I drive up there.
Well, that's about what you gotta do. Start your date.
We have three phones, we have three phones also from Verizon for Judy Anne, for Jill Hall and Amy Sutter. They're approximately a hundred and twenty-three dollars a month.
And then we do know.
That I remember. I called all three numbers and I ringed busy. If you wanna ring them right now, I got if you wanna ring them.
Why would you still have phones from forty years ago?
We're paying this bill.
Been paying for, well, Judy Anne has been gone probably six, eight years. Jill Hall's been gone four years.
Who's paying the bill? I mean... Yeah, let's get it.
I make a motion to cancel the three phones from Verizon.
They never had phones.
That's why we're making a motion.
Hire the accountant.
What, what type of phone did they have? Cell phones?
These are, these are...
There's a motion.
These are landline phones. Well, no, I think...
I have the right to ask the question.
Three of them are cell phones. One of them's landline.
Well, Jill and Amy always used their own phone, so I'm not quite sure where you're getting this.
You want to call the number? I got it right here.
It's not their number. Call it.
I've been calling them.
Call it right now and put them on speaker. Let's, let's...
It's not necessarily their number. It's a number that is...
Got a motion on the table up to...
Yeah.
I know, but they always use their own phones, all the time.
Mansel, excuse me, how long you been on council? How many years?
Too long.
I understand. And has been on it. You ever see this bill before? I can't understand.
I never seen it before. And I can't, what, what I'm, I'm flabbergasted about is because we had some really good secretaries in there and I can't believe we can pay any bills month after month after month.
Year after year, a year.
I mean, that was...
Ken, Ken, Ken. Judy Anne, Canyon or Judy Anne Warhol, whichever one it is, it's been a long time since they've been on, on the, you know, the burrow council. Every month for day one, the bills have been presented at the Borough Council meeting. Those are included in the bills every month.
Now, I have a question. Why do you answer him, but you won't answer anyone else?
He asked a question on the motion.
I asked a question.
He asked a question as well on the motion.
Yeah, I don't... All I'm saying is at home, you know, you get a bill and, wait a minute, what, what's this number for, you know? That's what I can't see how that slipped through. That's all.
I can't either.
Gordy, I would like to read to you what Jill Hall wrote. It says, "Please let it be known that Amy and I have never had a Lawrenceville Borough cellphone. We always use our personal cell phones at no cost to the taxpayers. I don't know the game that this council is playing, but I do not wish to be a part of Mr. Chilson's lies or his agenda."
It says it right on the bill.
Right on the bill. If you log into Horizon, you can...
Borough office for forty years, okay? I'll bring, we'll, we'll, we'll bring the state...
Okay, so even if so, Gordy, you have been on council the last two, year and a half, almost two years. Where the heck were you when those bills were being presented then every month?
In two seconds, we could cancel these services if you bring it through a vote.
If you just bring it through a vote.
They were on, they were on the, they were on the bills when you were on the Borough Council.
I also have, I have these, uh, beautiful, beautiful, you're a natural.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy, yes. Mansel?
Yeah, I like to find out more.
Been happily. Michelle?
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
Hank? Motion seven zero.
Yeah, they can be named anything. Oh, we can just, the call up and...
Didn't he say Cherry Street?
Yeah, the Potholes on Cherry Street.
The thirty-two fifty-nine phone number is on the, on the, sucking in front of the Borough Office.
This is what they're talking about. You can change it, whatever, anything.
Twenty-twenty-three Borough Insurance Broker, BAG Insurance.
That's all. That's all it is. It's just an effort to make...
Add a question from council members. Penn Dot, this is from Manhose. Explain that for...
Agreed from them, we were, we formed an agreement. We agreed to pay our share of ten thousand and some change, I believe it was. Ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine that we owe for our share of doing the group forty-nine. Um, as of yet, we have not done it, so I wanna make a motion that we paid the remainder of this bill. So maybe we can get more grants out of the road. If we do nothing, we'll go to court and we will lose. There's a written agreement that we will pay this. We have refused to do it.
And the reason we have not paid it is that our engineer walked the scene with Penn Dot engineers and we pointed out things in the project that weren't finished yet.
I was there.
Okay? No, you haven't been in the last one. You were there in the last summer. You weren't there last fall, okay? And they, they've been there several times, okay? They've, they have not finished the project and if we pay, well, another thing is, since we walked them last time, we've not, have been notified and paid them. So, look, issue is either they're gonna not finish the project and forget about our share or, uh, hopefully they finish the project.
What I remember at Penn Dot, the slope on the, the manholes, the manhole covers is that he said, "You could go around to different communities and then look and see if ours are like theirs. If not, then show us some photos." I remember all this and we never did anything. As a matter of fact, when we uncovered those three down on Brian's circle, a lot of weed and dairy, my understanding it was, everything was good after that point, except the slope on the manhole covers. And he argued that they're all the same and there's a variance. But not paying it, we will be in court. I tell you right now.
But anyway, the bottom line is, I don't feel it to Borough, and you can put it to vote. I don't feel the Borough should pay it till we get the project.
It's ten thousand dollars. That's our share.
But it's not finished.
It is finished.
It is finished.
Not, not his there. His said it was finished.
Jessica. I've already talked to him and I've got paperwork.
Where is it? See the paperwork?
I'll make sure you get copy.
Long as we pay Penn Dot what they're right.
Motion on the board, they didn't, Penn Dot ran. Uh, we don't know the dollar now yet.
Ten thousand.
I know.
And then that's not a grant.
Ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. It's our share. It's our share, the grant.
Your share, your share of the project. Need a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Cindy, roll call vote. Mansel? Or, excuse me, Cleo?
No.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy, no. Mansel?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Bob?
No.
Hank?
No.
Motion did not pass two to five.
Imagine that.
The next thing, Mansel, explain the next one. Added questions.
Oh, the thirty thousand, we took out the water and sewer fund. They put it to general fund to use. Um, our lawyer, we're actually, it was, um... Our attorney that we had last was, was saying that we must use the water and explain what we're used for. We just can't want a general fund to use it for anything. It's gotta be used for water sewer. And since it's been lost six months, we haven't used it. It should be replaced, put back into the water sewer fund and removed from the general fund. According to our attorney, second.
Do you have paperwork?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you should...
You guys all got copies of it.
I don't have them. I've been through that.
Of course, well, of course.
Yes. I'm not very...
It must have lost it in the flood. It must have lost it in the flood.
Seventy-two flood.
So what you're saying is, Mansel, this thirty thousand that belongs to the water or thirty thousand that's in the general that should go back to water or...
It should go back to the water sewer fund until you guys figure out what you wanna use the money for and put it back in the general fund. Maybe you gotta say, "I use this money for..." and put it back in the general fund, maybe you guys say, I use this money for slip lining. I use this money for whatever, uh, decolorator. You guys show we use that money, but you just can't spend it for any of them. As the Corbin law firm said, I just.
We were arguing, I think we argued against putting it in there.
Right, we did, and we did, we put it in there, because the lawyer said we could put it in there, but we must show.
We had quite a discussion not to put it in there.
Right, and I agreed to put it in there because I thought we were going to use the money for water sewer, but it hasn't been used. So it should go back into the water sewer fund until we figure out what we're going to use it for.
And I believe it was not the auditor, the solicitor, I think it was the.
Of course.
That was in the, uh, in the audit. Uh, well, you want to make a motion on that one, Mansell? Or you want to show us what you got and write it?
Well, you guys all got it, I'll buy another copy while you're doing that here.
We'll go down, generator for water plant, Mansell O'Dell. Here's the next issue.
Oh, generator. We all know we need a generator, and I had reached out to Jimmy Joe several times. Apparently somebody told him not to talk to me, but that's fine, but to do anything without generator, we need a pressure test from the gas company, which has got to be, an engineer to sign the paperwork, so we can get this project started, so we can get D E P off our backs. So I make a motion that we can give Joe or another engineer, if he wants to do it, to move this plant forward.
Is that a used, is that a used generator or new?
No, a new one.
New one? Because I heard our used one was bought, and that was a while back. That's what I heard. I don't know how true it is.
I make a motion to.
Hey, hold on. So, what, what is, what's the specification on this generator that you, that you want to do a pressure test on? Is it diesel, is it diesel or natural gas or what?
For natural gas.
Natural gas, so we, we talked about this. You're limiting it to natural gas.
We all talked about it, everybody said it, that's the natural gas. We all talked about this, we voted on the natural gas. Actually, steam fuse, it's had to be better than a diesel. So I reached out to Jimmy Joe to get a pressure test from the gas company to start this ball rolling, if there is enough pressure being run. And that was the first step. But apparently he was told not to, um.
Well, now you said this was the first step, but the first step is you voted down buying a generator.
No, I voted down buying a generator. It did not work, and I'm glad I did, because we finally found out it didn't work. It ran for a while and kept shutting off. This is the one you paid for, and you wanted us to put it in the corner and not run, because you didn't care, it's all just sitting there.
That's the one I'm talking about.
That's the one.
That's the one.
The, the first, never bought a generator.
You bought it. You bought it.
You're one who bought it.
Yet I sold it.
I heard you stuck it in one of your garages.
He bought it, what matter? Does it matter where it went?
Why, why did you buy a new one?
Why did the Borough buy it?
The Borough did not buy it.
Why did, why was the new one bought? Why, why wanted it fixed?
Why did we buy a new one?
Why didn't you buy a new one instead of?
They voted not to buy it.
Who voted not to buy?
You're, the one you wanted to buy.
Did not pass?
It did pass.
But anyway, so.
I want to move on, I want to make that two get, this is all rolling. We have a generator, so we know if there's enough gas pressure there to get one. I make a motion to do a pressure test at the water plant for a, that generator. And we need a spec, besides, we need thirteen K, twenty K.
I'll second that.
I, you know, I thought we did too, but I'd be told different.
Well, who's telling you different?
Does it matter? If it's not, if you got the specs, let's see them, we don't got to get nobody.
I did.
You got the specs?
That would be tonight, but we have them. We paid, we paid for them.
Okay, so.
We paid an engineer for them.
Well, that's all we need.
We're doing it over again, so.
So.
Motion on the floor. Okay, roll call vote, I made the motion, seconded by Michelle to.
We already have.
Motions, again, I'm finding out how much pressure we need on the gas line and what size generator.
We already have it, you just said, so I just, please, everybody needs to see them, whatever you got. We're no such a doing it again.
It wasn't on the gas, it was on the electric.
It wasn't on the, it wasn't on natural gas. If, if you. If you have a generator on the electric, it has to be separate from the, so today we got.
Mansell? They have an electric guy.
It has to be separate. General and electric, Pennsylvania statute. It has to be uninterrupted from all power.
Motion on the table to re.
Oh my God, did you hear that? Anybody hear that?
Motion by Bob, seconded by Michelle, roll call vote, Cleo? Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy?
Yes.
Mansell?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Ah, Hank?
But they don't care.
Seventy-zero to, to check the size of the generator.
Under, under interrupted, electrical service, water plant. Motion was made by Councilman O'Dell, seconded by Whistle, developed the natural gas generator, first checked, confirmed Jimmy Joe. Borough engineer, roll call vote, Councilmember Chilton, no, Penzo, no. Lisa, yes. Councilman O'Dell, yes. Russell, no. Whistle, yes. Council President Ogmo, yes. Motion was carried. And that was back in August third.
Okay, so where are the specs?
Then we, we made a motion to buy.
So where are the specs? No, you said, you said you made a motion to spec it out. You didn't say make a motion to buy it. Read it.
I know it's this one, Sam, this is what, to pin it out, natural gas generator. To pin it out. They had to get the specs from there to here.
Get the specs first.
And I tried to do that, but they refused to do it. Jimmy Joe, I showed you email, I showed you letter, he was.
Okay, we got a motion in the past. Decorination, Mansell, tell us about that you got on here.
Uh, sewer plant, decolorator, spent almost a year, now they wanted to lower the de, the chlorine going to the river. Jimmy Joe and myself thought several ideas about how to do that, and all of a sudden it just fell through the cracks. I don't know if he's working on it, you're working on it, nobody's working on it. But if we don't do that, we're going to get begging to get it out. It's a pretty simple fix, because our, our chlorination went out the rivers, really small, low. And if we did, have it to like a pool, and box it out, the water fills up. The dechlorination goes into the river, and with the water, so it'll bring right down to zero what we need from D E P.
The Water and Sewer Committee has met with the engineer, and the engineer is working with Pendot. Uh, setting up a timeframe when we have to have this done. Pendot? Excuse me, D E P. I'm sorry, D E P.
So it's been worked out with them, though?
Water issues.
What's the timeline on it?
What's that?
Said there was a timeline.
We haven't been, had it approved by D E P yet, the timeline.
You don't know it?
The timeline? No, it hasn't been approved yet.
No, I mean, how long does he got to hit it out?
It was supposed to be done by August twenty twenty-one.
Oh, what just the?
August twenty twenty-one. Are we still working on it?
On the decoloration? Yeah, same as the gen, generator.
He sent the proposal down to Pendot, E E P. They rejected it. They were, they were reviewing it.
And, and actually, before I departed, I spoke to Jimmy Joe on that, and completed the plan, and submitted it to the Borough Council for approval before sending it to the E P, and that's a part of it.
Then that was approved, if you did that.
Well, that was approved, and you said it.
But the D E P still never got it.
Well, I don't know about that, but I don't know why they wouldn't. And also, the generator, that Mansell was talking about earlier, that was supposed to be done project in two thousand nineteen.
And we still ain't done it.
We should have done it. Hey, I wasn't, I showed it, I wasn't the president.
We, you are now.
Yeah, but we're, we're not.
We're on some.
Pass the.
But you're now here later. Let's step it up here.
Well, they turned down our time plan, plan for that also.
That's because it's been on.
Water issues, water, light came down, could be leaked, Mansell, where's the leak, Mansell?
I don't know, I got brown water.
I got brown water.
I'm all stinks like sewer.
Exactly.
My sewer.
Mark was at my house and took samples.
Sometimes the water smelled like rotten.
I think I sent you guys.
And I ducked it out, cleaned the bucket out, to make sure. What you mean, I mean, you called D E P, they come and test your water?
I did. Mark was at my house.
So.
He took my water and proceeded.
I just, I just go up there, if there's a leak, I'm looking for it.
Yes.
What have you done?
The council has D E P if you have a water issue.
The council. The guys can't go see it, does any water come to the service somewhere?
Well, they look when it comes to water, believe me, yeah.
Okay, well, there you go. Normally if we have had a certified operator, we could maybe.
Lift station Ryan Circle needs replaced, Mansell.
No, it's not. There's a, there's a metal. Amount where the pumps go into the lift station, and one on the left side towards, um, the body. That was all rotted out, so I, you look around, one side of the pump is tipped over on the side. Everything in there is all rotten, rusted. The slide where it comes up and out, last time, Barnes and I was up there, I guess Chris was there.
At the bottom, at the bottom.
No, the whole rail when you bring it up is gone.
The rail is missing?
It's all rotten.
Okay.
This is a year and a half ago, few years ago. And I thought we were going to do something there, and we're still.
I'd like a motion for Mansell to look into replacing the lift station.
Every time I do something, you call behind my back and tell them not to do it, and we play that game.
So you're not willing to do it?
I, I'm not going to have some.
That's not what I'm asking.
I am not doing it.
Are you willing to do it?
No, I am not doing it. Based on that fact, and I can show him documents from the P A C O to the law boards.
I just asked a question, I'm sorry.
Jessica Beerin, Caleb Geis, pay, pay.
Oh, where's Jessica?
It's you, Jess.
I'm here. Caleb Blums, our certified water sewer operator, and his billing was submitted for the month of May, I even forwarded on to Dana. He has not been paid for the month of May. The Borough owes him five thousand dollars.
We requested a exit review.
He is not required.
You have.
I denied the exit interview.
Okay, we don't, we don't know, we don't know what's been turned in, what's been on reports or whatever.
That's not my problem. We've done, we've done the work up until that point.
We don't know that, we haven't had.
I make a motion, we hate Caleb Geis, based on the work they. That's my motion. I'm pointing to the, wait for hours.
And I second it.
Show us the report.
Motion was on here, show us the reports. He wasn't there.
I give you the reports that were due in the month of May.
So that's all in, everything's.
The, the reports for the, that were due in the month of May are submitted. The reports that were due for the month of May weren't due to D E P until June. I left before the end of the month. I mean, I'm still willing to submit those reports, but I don't have access to the plant to get the final paperwork. I was kind of waiting for you guys to send that stuff to me and.
You'll be questioned, see, we have an exit review.
But I don't want an exit review, and it wasn't in my agreement. I'm not required to do an exit interview.
No, no.
You want them to do that, and I don't want them to do it.
We got to get some reporting in, that you were responsible for, right? Up to the day you quit, right?
I, I am willing to submit the reports for the month of May, yes. But I need the paperwork to be able to submit them.
Because we're good people, we can pay the guy what we owe him.
Okay, uh, the motion for Caleb Geis had access to the plants and do the thing.
No, I do the.
He didn't say that.
No, not access to the plants. You can email me copies of the bench sheets and the sample results, and I'd be happy to submit the report, because that's all I need.
Give us a list of what you need on paper, and we'll get, make sure you get this up.
Okay, let's fill out this pack.
Need a motion for someone?
No.
To, uh.
There's a motion on the floor.
What's the motion?
Mansell need the motion to pay him.
Motion.
Okay, I need a second for the motion.
I second it. Cindy, second it.
Okay, the motion is to pay Caleb Geis without, uh, proof of, uh, grace.
That's what the motion is.
Okay, okay.
The motion is to pay.
Pay the guy.
Unreal.
Pay him what?
We're owed, what he's owed, he says.
What he's asked for.
He sent everybody what he was owed.
Okay, but, but motion's on the floor.
Five thousand dollars.
No, I had adjusted my invoices, the five thousand was for me to go to May thirtieth. And I only worked from May twentieth.
Well, somebody's on.
Yeah, and I subtracted that amount of time from the invoices, and I'm pretty sure I sent them to the Borough points already. So I have a copy here.
What is it? What's the number?
Uh, for the, uh, water for the month of May, it'd be seven hundred and seventy-four nineteen for the sewer, it was two thousand four hundred and fifty-one.
Seven, seventy-four nineteen and two thousand four hundred and fifty-one.
I don't expect you to pay me till the thirtieth, when I didn't work till the thirtieth.
We're getting figures here.
The question is, is somebody on this? No, we're paying him first.
D E P will get it. D E P will get it.
He don't, he don't do it.
And I mean, really, at this point, getting the reports submitted are not my responsibility, they're yours.
Again, thirty-two.
He's doing it on good faith.
I'm doing it on good faith, yes. And the other one.
You, you worked every month on good faith that you get paid.
Yes.
So we make a motion.
Uh, motion on the floor, Cleo?
Thirty-two, twenty-five, eighty. Does that sound right? Yes.
So we made a motion to pay Caleb, the thirty-two and some change. In return, he's going to finish up his paperwork.
Now you changed the motion.
Is that in the motion?
Is that in the motion? You changed your motion.
All right, we'll just pay Caleb then.
Let's just pay Caleb, pay Caleb.
I just trying to help you guys out a little bit, that's fine.
You don't need to help me, you need to help the Borough.
All right, we'll go pay Caleb thirty-one.
Cleo?
Yeah, I would go, yes.
He'll, he'll do it, Cleo.
D E P will get the reports.
Look, he gave us, he, he was honest enough to give us, he did pro rate it a month. Yeah, he pro rated, you think he's going to screw us?
In his contract, he had to give us a, uh, two week notice or, uh.
There was no contract.
There was no contract.
So.
He'll do it, Cleo.
Caleb, one of those reports due.
So now we're quitting the move.
Yeah.
Then you're not responsible.
Yeah, the water report was due by, what, would have been June twenty.
Well, then you weren't responsible.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't report May's results until June.
Oh shit, it's the same. Exactly. I mean, I submitted reports for the last operator that.
He'll do this, he's an operator. He's got companies all over, Tyoka County, Pennsylvania. He's not gonna screw up his good name for this kind of money. He will do what he says. Just pay the guy, he's waiting to learn.
Cleo?
I've been something bad anyway for him to leave after getting that much money.
No, but I don't, I don't think he should've, uh, quit on the spot like that.
It's not like that's a good idea.
If Cleo voted no, Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy, no.
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Bob?
Just go back.
Oh, we're going to, we're going to labor. Oh my god.
Four to three in favor of, uh, not to pay him. Now I need another motion.
Are you kidding?
Caleb, that paperwork I handed you, send it to the DOL tomorrow.
All right. Wait for hours.
Unreal. Unreal.
We're at the circus.
Well, how you know they're gonna pay him?
And the monkeys are all up.
Yeah.
What proof?
Are you really gonna do the reports?
Just man motion.
Just man motion.
You know what, Caleb, I wouldn't do the reports. They don't wanna pay you, don't do the reports.
Let's get away.
Take them away.
Nobody else will work for them to pay what they got.
Not all of them.
You don't tell us.
Until the time he left.
Okay, so, there's a motion on the table to pay Caleb for the end of May, when all the reports are done for the month of May.
He only worked until the twentieth. He's not required to do the report for May thirtieth.
So I need a second?
Five thousand dollars.
I said, Michelle?
Who made the motion?
Bob.
Okay.
Roll call vote, Cleo?
Oh, I bet you it passes.
I betcha.
Gordy, yes.
What proof are you gonna, if he does his job, you're gonna pay him?
Yes.
What proof?
On good faith.
He's gonna do the reports. Well, you didn't believe him, so I don't know.
Yeah.
You gotta, you say hello, you're gonna pay us.
Oh, look at there, it's on, we're supposed to listen to you. Anybody wanna?
Wait for it, you're pressing.
Hank, he wasn't here for the full month to do the report.
The reports were due June tenth. Charge him five thousand dollars for the reports. Check it back up.
There, there was no contract available. What am I trying to figure out?
You're paying him not the.
You can abstain if you want to. The vote passed four to two.
Caleb, I wouldn't do this. I don't like the board.
Heard Tazzy Horstur permission to pass the party into their house. We didn't know that.
I'm real.
You want to table that, both of them?
Yes.
Uh, you got those city charities?
Yeah. You see, we're gonna get an operator now?
For the full months of May, when the reports were. He said he's by a link, he's. He doesn't have to. He has the links to do it. If they're willing to pay him, they'll have as much more than what you're asking. I'm seeing a may where he's gonna get signatures. Yes, they are. They said till the end of May. Kevin, he's, he's already saying, we're willing to do the reports. I wouldn't do it. Just for your information, I think Sidney Rose is one of the people that fired Caleb back when she was on the borough council.
What? That was unnecessary.
She did not fire Caleb.
She did not fire, wait.
And they hired Crowley's to man, in, in, uh, lot of wealth.
Totally unnecessary.
Do you wanna, Caleb, did you see when I was on?
Two thousand eighteen?
I was not on when Caleb was there.
Two thousand eighteen?
I got on when Crowley's was there.
So Crowley's were there?
Crowley's were already there.
They didn't come out of two thousand fifteen.
Crowley's were already there.
So.
So I don't know where I am, but you can tell me where I was?
I will. The money from the water sewer going into the general fund, that's already done, right? And we, we had a promotion to, to pay that. I need a, I need a promotion on the thing that, put it back where it belongs.
Okay, now we're gonna take a motion for, uh, excuse me, take a recess for, uh, Dana to go get the.
Mansell has a motion on the table, you can't recess in the middle of the function.
You don't gotta be on that agenda.
It's not the agenda. Under any questions?
It's under the agenda.
Oh yeah, but there was no motion made, so he wants to make a motion.
What is it? To move the water, the third time we got the water sewer, that we moved it to the general fund, wanna back into the water sewer. Because we did not use, or a motion to move it to the backward. Is this the budget? The lawyers, the lawyers said that we could, that we could go to the general, if we're gonna use it. If you don't use it, it's gonna pass. It's expensive.
This one, you're. This one, you're.
Motion on the floor, to put the money back until we need it.
But you have no, fuck, you have no proof of what you got, right?
No proof. What can't you?
What do you wanna know, Gordy?
Give that to Dana. What's happening? Why can't you do that? You did the motion, what can I say?
Okay, we need a second.
I'll second that.
But you're, okay, here's what you know.
I know, I know.
Okay, now tell me what you know.
Traded for thirty thousand, silver fifty-three dollars from a sewer friend of mine.
We don't, we don't have any documentation.
He has it right there.
Gordy, open your eyes.
That's in the minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Two minutes, you can work on it.
It's all through the paper, I find it work. Then if you, if you go back, you know, you see, we moved it into the general fund, because I thought, and the lawyer thought, we were gonna use that money. So the attorney said it's okay to put it there, as long as we designate what that money's gonna be used for. If we don't do that, it's gotta go back, that's first.
Okay, okay, okay folks, listen up here.
That's just the first part of it.
Okay, listen up here, folks, okay.
That's the first part of it.
Read, read what you're saying right here. Okay, what does it say here? What does it say here? That says to put it in the general fund, not into the water fund. He's, he's wanting to.
No, we can't put it in the general fund.
Well, that's what the auditors tell you to do.
No, no, that's not.
No, right there, read it.
I know what, that's you guys saying.
And your secretary told you you couldn't do it.
Wouldn't it? I didn't write that.
The secretary said she couldn't do that. She fought and fought and fought with you.
I'm like, you guys all know that office, so stop jerking me around here.
Well, it's come, you said it come right from the auditor, right here.
There's both sides of the table anyways.
That's you guys claiming the auditor's sound, you can take it.
Who wrote this? Who wrote this?
The secretary wrote it.
Okay, and you're telling me that Williams is not, was not the auditor?
I don't know who the auditor was there.
Right there, that's the H, J H Williams.
Okay.
Okay, right there, two thousand.
I didn't write this. They were writing based on probably what you were saying.
I didn't tell the auditor what to put in the auditor.
She hit it right there, she didn't, the auditor didn't write this.
Well, it says right here, the auditor.
He didn't write this paperwork.
Were they the minutes? Did they pass? Did those minutes pass?
Gordy, you bet there's a thousand, I don't think you're arguing with it. The thirty thousand, you know, I just called McCordill Law Firm in our attorney, and if you don't think I can call it, I can go away, do that also. Well, you can.
That minute says it's to put it into the borough.
Right, because that's what you guys wanted to do. And McCordill Law Firm said, yes, you can do that, as long as you show what you use it for, the water sewer. If you do not do that.
Whoa, 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 I said it in the general fund, not in the, in the water sewer.
You gotta put it back into the general fund now. It's gotta go back to the water sewer.
He's showing where it was moved to the general.
That was never moved, it was tabled.
It would go, later on, it was moved.
Show me where it was moved, thirty thousand.
Show us where it was, show me the minutes. Show us where it was.
He doesn't understand, he has it backwards.
But there's a motion on the table, so.
When you gotta go now, I just said it for purpose too.
So, we have a motion that the attorney said.
No, we have a motion to do what? To take the thirty thousand and some change, that we moved from the water sewer and moved into the general fund. And now we're not having, we did not use that for the water sewer, so I want that thirty thousand back into the water sewer fund. But, correct the attorney.
But, your, your information comes from the auditor, not the attorney.
This is not from the auditor. The secretary wrote this shit, I didn't, and the auditor didn't write it.
Well, anyway, it's tabled in that. Right there.
Later on, yes.
No, that day, that day right there is tabled.
Later on, we moved it, I'll find it.
Okay, please. But you want it voted on right now?
You can look, you can look it up on the computer, where that money was moved.
You want it voted on right now?
Yes.
Well, this is later. I want the motion to show that it's time to get the money back, and you guys say no. So I make a motion to put the money back where it belongs, yes.
Where does it belong?
It belongs in the water sewer, water sewer fund.
Okay, even though it's, it's actually the other way around.
No.
No.
That's what it says.
No.
Yes, all right, Gordy, so we got a motion on the floor to move thirty thousand from the water sewer to the general.
From the general to the water sewer.
Don't do what that says.
That's what we did to begin with.
Do it the opposite of it.
We did exactly that way. We were moving it back.
Show that to Michelle.
We were moving it back.
Show that to Michelle. All right, so we need a second. Sidney sent by Cindy?
Just move it back.
Yep. Uh, need a roll call vote? Cleo?
Yes, still there if we need it.
They're trying to get these two to design.
Cindy?
So they can get.
Gordy, no. Mansell?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob? Hank?
Yes, thank you.
Six to one.
Thank you.
You're gonna show us where that money was.
And I'll show you the document from the attorney, since you probably haven't seen it.
That passed six to one?
I need a motion for, uh.
Who said no?
For, uh, okay, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a recess here, fifteen minutes or.
Open it up, yeah.
No, I wouldn't.
Maybe even three.
Fifty minutes.
Fifty minutes for she can do it best.
It's fresh air.
It's a lot of sense, don't worry about it.
The auditor is, I think we follow shit. How do you read it? That's, the secretary wrote this down, based on what people were talking about, you said the auditor sent that.
What are you gonna, I'll show you.
I think yes, Karen.
So, I know, there's gotta be something that.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
The water, water sewer revenue are what's called enterprise funds. It is against the borough to use enterprise funds or general fund purposes. But it's, it's also against the law to pay water, enterprise bills out of the. Well, that's, that's gonna catch up with me. My only interest in this is that the residents of the boroughs are not infringed on, taken away from, and that they get the services that they're presented with. Uh, their key title.
He can make arrangements, everybody's gonna apply, I do what I tell you, I know.
You said the big matter. Okay, don't give up the fight. Boy. I know you get disappointed and.
So guys, for any of you that can, that are watching, if you want to help donate to my cause, here's my cash out. Here's my new car. Make sure you ding this for notifications. We'll work on a microphone sometime soon. We'll work on a microphone sometime soon.
To this side of the table. To that side of the table. If they were... The way they seconded them at the table, we've been just like...
Change your camera, plug it over.
Me and this one, it's gonna go around. Yeah, make sure you face it.
And he's angry, and he's angry, so it's like...
Yeah, but then you got Judy's and Jill's and Amy's.
I bet he wears pantyhose.
How's Walt doing?
Well, there's good. He won't come to this meeting because...
You can't stand it. What pressure gets through? I know. What's the only thing to do is walk in here? And Gordy's pushing.
I know, I heard, it's really a reason what that year even go. You can't... Oh, by the way, the air conditioning in the bathroom works. Would you like me to open the door?
That was sewer plant, water plant. And I think one maintenance guy had one. See, you can go in there and change the heat. Yeah, yeah. And maybe they're the first. Yeah, the air conditioning. See, Amy never, they both said they're on the cell phone, 'cause I slid out there.
I found that out when I was in there.
You think we should work some here?
Call Judy back to order.
No, I'm coming back.
Jessica, you still here? Jessica had to leave. Jessica had to go to work. Okay. How about Krista?
Oops, who's Krista?
Who's Krista?
Yes.
Is there been report for request of provide term limits for each council member? Uh, expiration date for each, uh... The term limits are two-year or four-year, expiration is at the end of two-year or four-year. Status of pending grants can... Is anyone on the council aware of any grants are in the process?
Yeah, there's that one we have, thirty-two thousand dollars.
And what is she, that event now, has it come yet?
No, it comes August seventh, middle of August, August seventeenth, the second afternoon.
Yeah.
And was it... That was that...
That was a pandemic. Every community got it. We're gonna use it for the generator. Every, every, every community got it. I'm dating into Strategic Management Plan Program that Jess gave me, and I spoke with a guy once, and still waiting to... Top of my information, but, uh, there's not a lot to it, and you grant right. But she, she's asking... If you don't pay the other grants, I will. We haven't got any. What grant did we ever get paid? That was a bill, not a grant, that was a bill. It was still funded by somebody else. Why was the last grant rejected from council? Uh, I'm not aware of any grants being rejected by council.
No.
It says I heard council... Not unless they find out the one you refused to sign, it's not part of the process. Reason I didn't sign it is, is because I was liable for signing it. That's why... So, everybody in the town committee signed it? They're all liable, and you weren't gonna do it? I'm not gonna sign it. You almost lost the sixty-four thousand dollars. I didn't lose you a penny. You would've. If somebody stepped up to the... Stat, status of monthly financials. There's a pack, or this, anybody in your packet got their look of financials from...
Yeah, I don't understand.
January through, uh, uh, June.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
They're all right there. I'll go through it and see what you think. Do we have a CPA treasurer, why not? Why are the actions being taken at this panel tonight? Are there any pending litigations? Any litigation that is against the borough or by the borough cannot, cannot be disclosed? Requesting copy of borough's ordinances and states issue reversed with reams of paper. I don't think I...
Can you get a copy of them? She had good copy, right? It's not...
Well, yeah.
I don't know.
That's, that's another issue we got right now, uh, that the previous borough council voted twice not to enforce the borough ordinances or borough code. That's not true. By law, you gotta enforce your...
I'm set that meeting.
By law, you gotta enforce it.
But I also was set that meeting when y'all voted.
Right, no, not, we all did that vote.
No, I know, I, I'm just...
But it had nothing to do with all, all the ordinances. That was his interpretation, what he wanted to hear, or what he wanted to vote on. You cannot, you've got, mandated by the state to enforce the law of the current vote.
I remember slinging my hand on the table and telling him, Kevin, you needed to enforce the ordinances, and she did not.
Well, you can't do it willy-nilly, just like him going out and being a code enforcer. It's like him making approval for buildings that are not inspected. I mean, it's not about that problem. You lie. Gordy, I got a rare station that comes from... I approved the application. No, here we go again. We went through this last time, nobody got the application, and then it was already done.
No.
Uh, that we're not following today?
Right.
Sign ordinances. Orcy ordinances. They've been not followed for how many years? What, what side ordinance you talked about? We only have one side ordinance. Which one? We only have one side ordinance. What building you talked about now? Well, the dog rumors got four sides with no orders, with no permits. Okay, what does the order say? Oh, oh, Michelle, you know what the order says?
I don't.
'Cause you told me, I mean, last time we talked, I should know all these by heart.
I told you if something was coming to the meeting, you should know about it.
If I had the information, I could do that. I don't have the information to just...
That wasn't under me.
Go to the borough office and research it.
That wasn't under me.
No, I'm saying I don't get what's on the agenda, so how can I research it?
That wasn't under me. I didn't have any control over your agenda back then.
I understand what my point was. Anyway, twice they voted not to enforce the borough code ordinances. And I'll bring you, uh, the minutes that says that. You probably got the minutes there, if you got all the minutes. You got them last year. Right till last fall, they voted not to enforce the borough ordinances or codes. Remember he was talking about, um...
Yes, that's true.
We voted to enforce ordinance one thirty-six. There were, there were... But, yeah, we did. We did. But by law, we gotta enforce the ordinance. Anyway, it's true. Your motion for this...
Can I make some statement first, please? No, it's on the agenda. Yeah, no. It's on the agenda now. So, for the person... Show it to Lucy. For the person who said that Jill Hall never had a phone, her name is on this bill.
Well, I can go on there, okay?
But I'm saying, don't call us a liar when we have it approved.
Then I'm gonna go home and put your name on my bill, Michelle.
Go ahead, and I will call the police.
Everybody, everybody covers itself.
Gordy's initials are on there approving it.
Okay.
So, I guess Jill gets to call the police.
Oh, yes, she does.
And anybody that wants a copy of the pending litigation, I got it right here.
Whose initials are on what? Pay attention.
Pay attention. God, you act like you don't know anything.
Put your name in your ass.
My name's Carl Cox, I'm from Knoxville, Pennsylvania, and I'm a borough councilman in Knoxville. My question is, there was a lot of discussion tonight about phones.
Yep.
And how long some of these phones have been in existence, that the borough has been paying the bill.
Right.
Who is authorizing the bills for payment?
The county. All seven hours. No, no.
No.
Four.
No, there should be one person signing each bill, authorizing the secretary, treasurer, or treasurer to process the check to, to pay the bill.
Well, if you look on these bills, it's what you did.
Don't you know?
No.
There's a...
You don't know who your signers are? No. There's no one here?
Then none of them should be being paid. Reported and paid.
Why would you...
Hey, you've been voting for eight years to pay for a cell phone.
You had that sign there for eight years.
Somebody should be approving the bills for payment. I've only been doing it for a couple of years.
You bet, and before that, how many years?
The bills for payment for process. There's former councilmembers out there that will take the same bill, but don't wanna take the responsibility now. Well, then you.
Or do you run council years ago?
I don't sign checks, and I don't pay. But the bottom line is, you shut it off tonight. The previous council continued to pay it. Well, we need to explain that.
You have a previous...
A waste of money. We need to lock those cell phones. Absolutely. Nobody is authorizing the bills to be processed. Well, we should have the bill. We shouldn't have the bill.
They don't, we don't even know where the cell phones are. I asked.
Yeah, we don't see the bills till we get here, so...
Mr. Chilson, you've been on council often on it for a long time.
That's right.
Not just two years. Don't feed these people that you've only been on for two years.
Before cell... What'd she say? No, I've been on it, well, since this, this cellphone...
You were on it before.
Yeah, but not since the cellphone deal.
Uh, yeah, you were.
No. These are four-one-eight numbers, they just started in the last couple of years.
Where have you been?
Yes, yes, yes.
He was on the council when you were on it.
One more, we got a resolution here from, uh... Committee. They want a resolution signed and filled out by the borough. They give you a template on what to do, and there's a copy here for us. And I need to, I'll pass this around and...
Is it on the agenda?
Uh, it's...
You need to add it to the agenda before you can act on it.
So, I'm gonna pass this around and, and take a look and see...
Donna Eden here, you just had to say a lot after the agenda.
No, not to bid, they let you finish your sentence.
What, what, what is the thing for us? What's it for?
What are we paying now?
We're not paying anything. We're passing it around to see if we wanna add it to the agenda next month.
What is it?
What he just explained.
He didn't explain.
Explain.
I don't have it in front of you, yes, she'll tell you.
Don't start with me, kid.
Cindy, what is it?
Hazard mitig, it's the twenty-twenty-two Hazard Mitigation Plan Municipal Adoption Resolution.
That has to be done. That is part of your FEMA. It goes from you to the county to FEMA to FEMA. It has to be done.
I, I sent out a mitigation advisory committee. Ioka County spent fifty thousand dollars to a mitigation advisory update for five years for the county. If you guys, you don't have to do anything, just adopt that plan, and it's gonna save you fifteen thousand dollars not having to do your own.
Correct. All we're asking is, do we want to vote on it tonight or put it on the next agenda?
It's not on this agenda.
And if we can add to the agenda of your, a roll call vote.
Correct. Carl, did they have to participate in the development of that in order to be part of it?
If they got the letter, obviously somebody participated.
Okay, thank you.
So, that would be the emergency, uh, management official, which I'm sure they don't need.
Brett Hackett.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, Brett.
Brett, Brett has just one meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they might've got that letter, so maybe it's just...
It's almost like that, too.
I did last time. I did last time. So, they're going to add this, whatever it is.
Whatever it is, it's a resolution.
Ancient resolution to the agenda.
I second that.
Motion made by Bob to put out an agenda, second by Michelle.
Tonight's agenda?
Sorry, just a quick...
Yes.
Roll call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy? Yes. Mansell? Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Okay, now, we're gonna adopt that resolution and send it in the copy.
Yes.
Okay, make a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution, send it to the copy.
Motion on the floor to adopt resolution, we're gonna name this Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two-Dash-One.
Still on the Wolverines?
I thought you saw it.
No.
We have a second. Motion made by Michelle to, uh, sign the resolution, seconded by Cleo, roll call vote. Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy?
Yes.
Mansel?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Good motion to adjourn. Motion made by Bob.
She needs to pay the, she needs to pay the bills first.
Oh, excuse me. Did you get those bills a little over?
Yeah, but I found one that's wrong.
Okay, let's see.
It's, it's just off, we're paying less than what it is, we're gonna get another late fee.
Yeah, what's, uh, what's the bill?
Uh, Frontier.
Phone bill.
Yeah, she subtracted the dollar fifty-four off the wrong amount, it's supposed to be one sixty-eight thirty-four, and she has one sixty-six eight, and it already is worth something weird. I'm just saying. They will hit you for a late fee.
So need an addition or subtraction?
If you gotta pay more, is it, sorry, a dollar fifty-four more, are you gonna get a late fee?
Make a motion to pay the bills and, and that.
Boy, is that check, we actually do check.
Yeah.
Did you make a motion to pay the?
Not yet.
I made a motion to pay the bills with the amended dollar amount for Verizon.
Frontier.
I second it.
Motion made by Bob to pay the bills, seconded by Michelle with the change to the one dollar amount on one phone bill. Roll call vote, Cleo?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy?
Yes.
Mansel?
No, sorry, though.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Motion passed six to one to pay the bills. Now, agenda. Adjournment, the motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded. Seconded by Cleo. Roll call vote, Cleo? Cindy?
Yes.
Gordy?
Yes.
Mansel? Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Hey? Party's over. And the freak show is over.
Those cards are doing really good to the other.
There's actually a pile of there, I think.
You can chuck it right now and die.
Hey. Yes, hey. I'll talk to you in the morning.
All right.
Janet, I'll see you at the next one. We're gonna have to tie your mouth up, say you get done.
And the county commissioner is at ten.
Now, it's always a bad weekend. Good night, guys.
Your head up. Ew.
I was trying. I got friends texting me, God. This is a bad week. My dad.
Nothing strange. Blame it. Blame it, blame it on the other council, blame it on the other council, blame it on the other council. And you don't have the agenda.
I, I promised myself when I left.
At three o'clock this afternoon.
Same time I did.
Yeah, this afternoon.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, I was just not, other ladies' homes.
You didn't?
Yes, I did.
I heard Mansel.
I first.
Where did he leave us the money?
Yeah.
No, he's on the engine next to the plane, he didn't see.
No. No, we don't worry, it's about as many other than I. She was on the agenda, she was on the agenda, but she didn't know that, so they told her, and he just did that to her, like, through, um, period.
You're watching.
Under the bus with the sign. They went down and around, signed just the permanent fixtures, and I think the order says something about fixtures, Mansel's plan things. I don't, you know what else? Did you get a card?
Yes.
With the QR, so they're, they're signed.
I don't have a.
So technically, if that was outside, it would not be, that would be, am I right?
That's, that's why the sign is guaranteed, although that neon sign is on the inside of the door. Because the guy that had it before wouldn't pay the fees, you get a permit outside.
Well, I know right now I've got it on a down.
Oh, okay.
Pop a camper, motorcycle on my, or for sale, we're supposed to have. I've got trouble really, stopped at my house and told me I can't do that, because I'll just start telling you about all the things I know that you don't.
She, that's, that's a wrong sale. That's a wrong ship, you're not selling wrongies.
It's true.
You're selling items, you're selling.
Yeah.
The motorcycle. My husband is not, he's tired, like, you won't always be in the service, so, I told my Steve, Steve has actually stopped at our house, and we sit on the porch, and wine, and I see he's no longer allowed on our property.
That is something that's good, he put it in the back, that's true, it's authorizing the bills and whatnot.
Why was it checked for? Why was it checked for?
Why? Like, we should go over the check before the council sees the check.
They should go over the bills and authorize the treasurer to process the bill.
You're not gonna have it, that happens, treasurer's in Knoxville, I'm.
Yep, the bill's coming to Knoxville, the bill's coming to Lawrenceville.
Yeah.
Somebody's gotta take them, right? Well, she's gotta come and get them.
Before we got, before we got the hot stuff.
Well, that's why Franklin had that discrepancy, she broke the bill out. By, this is what I did for a living, and that's why I'm sorry, no, particular, but I can be.
Well, she's a proactive. That was a dollar fifty-four, she doubled the. Well, that's.
Was that, was that, down in Knoxville?
I don't remember that.
I don't remember.
They gave me the balance sheet for water and storm and, uh, two weeks ago, because the last meeting I said, I wanted to know what this is. I went home, and I made all, I finished, I showed her.
It's great, guys.
I said, no, it's here, there's wages, there's nothing. Today I go in, I sent her a Saturday facility bound, I needed a dial bound, to know what you're, where, oh, she repeated it over the weekend. So I spent three hours of my weekend studying these, so I would know what to say, and they were the wrong, it was all the wrong stuff, halfway done. Halfway done.
All right, guys, I wanna give everybody else that's still inside an opportunity to come by and say hello or say something, um, after that, I'm gonna end the feed, feel free to reference anything that you need to, and reach out to me on Facebook, send me messages, like, follow, subscribe, ding the bell, all good stuff.
What are you doing, babe?
I was.
No, the thing, well, this is a cell phone.
To get out of it. Yeah. I'm positive that's what it was. I think it was insurance, and it was the other one.
No, it was Chris baby, and Jim. But I don't know why they got put in a court.
Are they gonna?
Yeah, that's why it's a work.
What else? They need, I think they need an internal audit, if they're finding.
No, no, they need a forensic audit to go back like ten years. Not, 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 not an internal.
We had a foreman.
Yeah, but you need it on the whole borough.
So, they did one on us, trying to find something on, so they couldn't let anything back. Because we, we could show everything that we've done. As soon as he came on. Two years ago, two years ago, yeah.
You, you aren't doing like, sort of, canceling a lot of the doors, water funds and steel funds, that are what are called enterprise. Enterprise fund cannot be used for general fund purposes.
Right.
General funds and funds cannot be used for enterprise.
Yeah. So.
He told us it was a claim, because you're needing to have enough to pay all the wrong issues, we, we borrow from, from the.
She had an income.
It would be their own. Maybe she had hired anybody, maybe to do that, so if somebody noticed that.
Bye, Dan.
Good night. Um, it's, 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 cause I remember, but it doesn't exactly sound like a, like a monetary or something, like they, they were. That's just what I count the water, so it wasn't like. I don't know, that could be some S and A.
Angie.
Is it the last one?
Yeah.
He said he'll get me a statement.
All right.